In accordance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30, headed forward to touch ADE, South Carolina Code 1987 is amended. All the media in the immediate area have been notified of the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. We'll have our prayer by Mr. Goedan Hall by the close from Mr. Reed.
Let's bow. Heavenly Father, this again God that we come to say thank you. We thank you for help in our lives. And we ask God that you will allow us to conduct this meeting in a manner that pleasing to you. We ask that you will make decisions that in the best interest of our children and the citizens of Darlington County. We ask God that you will provide traveling merchants as we return back to our respective homes. This we asking your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We get a motion to approve the agenda.
To a motion.
Is it? Second. No, it's. Yeah, okay. Okay. All in favor? Close. And no, we have no citizens comments tonight. Okay. And that turns us over to our South Carolina football awards, all state football awards. Dr. Newman, you there?
All right. So Mr. Schuler is going to take the podium for our awards and recognitions for all-state football team.
Good afternoon, everyone. I have the honor and privilege of recognizing eight of our players sent to Darlington County School District that was chosen for the 2023 South Carolina Football Coaches Association All-State Football Team. We'll begin with Darlington. We have at wide receiver, All-State, Keenan DeBose. You come forward. The principal is Ms. Courtney Gurking, AD, Coach Norris, and head coach, Coach Johnson.
The coaches come?
Yep.
Excellent. All right. Thank you. Congratulations.
From Hartsfield, representing the defensive back, Damariyon Cole. Representing offensive line, Slaton Stokes. And the running back, Hakeem Waters. Frederick Lewis, AD, Mr. Brad Boo, and head coach, Jeff Calbridge.
Thank you.
Congratulations. From Lamar High School, we have an inside linebacker, Freddie Cruz. At wide receiver, Montavious Dollford. As athlete, Zory Pierce. And represent offensive lineman, Kendall Walton. We recognize their principal, Dr. Marlon Thomas. Our AD, Carlos Burgess. And their head coach, Coach Bruce.
All right, I'm gonna need y'all to squish in a little bit. That's great. Perfect. All right, y'all get on either side, maybe.
We've done this a few times.
Perfect. Ready? Thank you.
Great job, y'all.
Yeah, guys, if y'all, if anybody would like to leave at this time, you're certainly well, we'll take a home. We're closed right here.
We know y'all are headed back to do homework tonight, so.
All right, we'll move on to our consent items. We've got the minutes for the January 8th and January 22nd.
So the 8th look good, the 22nd, I don't think, or whatever. So we probably need to push those to the next month.
Okay.
Should we do the 8th?
Can we, do we need a motion to move that to next month? Since it's on the agenda, can I go to motion?
Can I move that we move the?
Those two consent items.
The two consent items to the next meeting.
Second. In favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, that moves us on to our next Board of Education work session will be February the 26th here in the training room. And our next regular meeting will be March 11th at 6:00 PM, also here in the training room. We have our adult ed admissions. I need a motion to approve those.
May I make a motion to approve?
I need a second?
Second.
Any of y'all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Dr. Newman, we have our strategic plan focus areas update.
Chair Hassler, members of the board and members of our audience, this is a time where we talk about our strategic plan focus areas for the different schools. And this is for the month of January. So, starting with student success, Bay Road Elementary celebrated their 100th day of school with a Hartsfield High School mascot. Red Fox came over and gave hundreds of high fives to our excited students. Carolina Elementary, the students from each grade level earned the most trophies in Exact Path Math and Exact Path Reading. And Language Arts for the month were treated to wacky packs from Sonic. The Darlington County Institute of Technology is preparing for their spring interactive career fair where they'll welcome ninth grade students from Darlington High School as well as 10th grade students from Mayo. The Darlington Middle School had all A's Chick-fil-A celebration and honor roll award day for behavioral incentives as well. And Hartsfield Middle School had their, the Hartsfield Middle School Academic Challenge team is currently undefeated at 5-0. Congrats. JL Kane Elementary School honor roll students were recognized by the Academic Booster Club with a pizza party. Lamar High School, 80% of their Institute of Biomedical Science students passed their project Lead the Way and a course Human Body Systems test. And it says in parentheses, which is, by the way, very difficult, so I believe them. Pate Elementary School, Pate hosted a book signing honoring their new published authors. The kids researched, wrote, and illustrated, and published their very own hardbook books. Parents and the community members attended the signing to celebrate with their new authors. Rosenwall students who are reading the most text in Myon, which is a reading accessible program, recognized at a luncheon hosted by the media specialist. Spalding Middle School had their students that had no discipline, no missing work, monthly celebration. And St. John's had their Character Counts Club Award students recognized. They also had a mother-son date night sponsored by the APT. So Thornwell School for the Arts, Terrific Kids were recognized during the pep rally by their teachers. Teachers shared what makes the students terrific. And students who received positive office referrals and Terrific Kids certificates participated in a minute-to-win-it activity. So lots of good stuff going on for student success, for staff excellence. DCVA congratulated Mrs. Carla Jefferson, who was elected as treasurer to the ISTE, I-S-T-E, which is an acronym, but it's a national technology organization. And so congratulations to Ms. Jefferson. We also have Hartsfield High School, Hartsfield High School Social Studies teacher Jill Young received a scholarship to attend a study trip to Poland this summer with the South Carolina Council for the Holocaust. And then also, we have community engagement activities. Brockington Elementary School held their Title I Awards Night. And the admin team handed out information to parents as well as honored the students for their second nine weeks' achievements. Darlington High School has their student, I'm sorry, their SIC committee was able to draft a letter to the parents that they're sending out for this month and this quarter that they're working on. We also have Hartsfield High School, well, I already mentioned Jill, I'm sorry. Community engagement, back on task. Lamar Spalding Elementary School, a parent drop-in was held for first grade where students presented their work and read a book to their parents as well. And we also had Mayo High School, Mayo's National English Honor Society collected and donated 768 books to St. John's Elementary School so that each student could get a book before they took their holiday break. That's a lot of books. 768. Southside had a food drive to support Carolina's kids. The students donated food items to the Carolina kids for the Hunger Buster Bags. And again, Thornwell had math night, they had their Title I Math Night, which they, at the meeting, parents were informed about the continuous improvement plan, but also parents then went to classrooms to learn about strategies they can use at home to help their students. So again, lots of good activities and recognitions that are going on through the school district for strategic plan recognition on the goals areas.
All right. All right, we have, we have our quarterly reports. See anyone have any questions? We have that and the budget report. Do you have any questions for? Any questions? All right, moving on to human resources. Mr. Miller, if this is an update for you.
Yes.
Dr. Newman, assist.
Yes, Ms. Hassler, members of the board, I'm pleased to be able to give you a February overview of human resources to give you an update of where we are with our group, with our recruitment, retention. I look forward to this every year, and it's a good time to do it. We are deep into hiring season right now, all across the state. So I hope you have a handout there with my outline, just five key points I'm gonna go over with you, then I'd be happy to answer any questions you have. First, our vacancies. We, as of today, right now, we have 19 certified teacher vacancies in the district. So that's our current allocate, based on our current allocations and our current class sizes, that'll be important in a moment. Of those vacancies, two are elementary, six middle, and 11 in our high schools. Nine of those are special ed. Projections for '24, '25. So during the past month, we had our intent forms go out. There was a month-long window. We received 984 certified intent forms back, so that's everyone who could have responded did. Not include, the numbers here do not include principals or district-level administrators. Of those 984, they're telling us their intent for next school year. We've had 13 resignations, one special ed, nine general ed, and three non-teaching professionals. So those would be psychologists, a counselor, speech therapist. So three non-teachers. Eight full retirements, and seven requests for working retirees. So those are individuals in intent to retire, but upon recommendation and approval want to come back next year to, as a working retiree. So that's excellent. We had a 98% retention rate, resignations and retirements together, 99% if you just looked at the resignations. The distribution was expected from school to school, so there was no school that stuck out among the rest as far as teachers exiting the school. And it was also an even distribution across the grade band from K-12. About 50% was in elementary, 50% middle and high. Of note, we have 55 non-certified teachers on letter of agreement. Those are individuals who were in an alternative certification program, paid, teachers of tomorrow. They can get hired with understanding that they make progress through their program. So we look at those on an individual basis this time of year and make recommendations for next year. So total vacancies, if you look at the number we have now, the number projected based on intent forms, we're looking at 40 to 45 vacancies around contract time. We've had as many as 70 during my time here, so that's not bad. And so now we gotta fill those vacancies, we gotta plug those holes. That brings me to the hiring event. It was another great event. I appreciate the board members who came out. It means a lot to our current schools that you were there, those of you who were able to make it, and to our recruits. Thank you so much. I've gotta shout out all the hard work that goes into it. So my HR team, all the school-level teams, we actually started today to plan for the 2025 event. So thank you so much for everybody who helped bring this thing together. We had 253 participants who pre-registered and another 67 who walked in and registered on-site. We hired for everything, so 60% of them were classified, 30% were certified, and 10% were those alternative certification teachers. Had a great turnout for food service, custodian, bus drivers, and substitutes, so we filled a lot of those slots on Saturday. We were very intentional in the position we were interviewing for, we didn't want to, especially with the ESSR conversations that had been going on, we didn't want to overhire. So we were very intentional about that. And again, thank you to the board members who were able to attend. So that's gonna dip into that 40 to 45 that we're projecting, the hiring event, full long way towards that. We're still combing through the paperwork as it's coming in. And then student-teacher ratio, which is probably gonna have the biggest impact going into next year. COVID allowed us to step a little bit, ease up on our 20 to 1 ratio. We've been at a 20 to 1 ratio in elementary since Dr. Newman came, 25 to 1 in middle and high. But as COVID came and ESSR money came, we've been able to ease up on that a little bit. So our classes have gotten smaller and smaller. We're gonna make every effort to get back to 20 to 1 in elementary, 25 to 1 in middle and high, and that will free up about 20 to 25 teachers coming out of those classes into our vacancies. So if you do the math, that's 20 out of the hiring event, maybe, 20 freeing up from getting our class sizes back where they should be, and we have 40 to 45 vacancies to fill. So things are looking good for the upcoming year. And finally, the principal vacancies, just so you'll know, you're aware of this, we've got three principal spots that were posted today, three principal positions, Lamar Spalding Elementary, Spalding Middle, Pate. And we publicize those locally under SCAS, so that'll be nationwide, statewide. Throw out a wide net for the principal hiring. The next step, while we wait on the applicants to come in, we're going to survey the community, survey staff to get some input and feedback on what they're looking for in the principal. The goal is to have three principals named by the contract deadline on May the 10th. So I feel like we're in good shape. If this were state of HR, the state of HR is looking good. Any questions?
Can I have any questions?
Sounds like good numbers.
A lot better.
Dr. Newman, you have anything to add?
Well, just that I appreciate the support that the board showed for the hiring event that we held. I know a lot of y'all were able to come out and meet people and greet people and just kinda get a chance to have some conversations. So I think that speaks highly of the district when they see our board members and our leadership that's out there. Heard many people say over and over, you know, how much they appreciate that. And I think a lot of people were shocked that we're not from here, when y'all may have introduced yourselves and say, hey, I'm so-and-so, I'm a board member, or hey, you know, I'm the superintendent. They're not used to seeing that.
Right, I wanna apologize, somebody tried to hire Audrey Gore, they didn't recognize her. I apologize, they didn't recognize her. You walk in that room, you're fair game. I apologize.
Well, it was very well done, and I have enjoyed that event last year and again this year. It's well done, it's got a fun atmosphere, everybody seems to be enjoying themselves.
And to our principals that are in the room here, y'all did an excellent job. Your staff did an excellent job as far as setting up your boost that you had. You were, I would say, nicely competitive with each other. Is that a term that I could use? There was good spirit in the room, even though you all may have been after similar candidates with some of the things that you were looking for, but the camaraderie was very much felt throughout the room. So I appreciate all of y'all's efforts and your staff members that joined you as well.
They stepped up their game.
They did.
It was very good.
They've been better than last year.
Yeah.
And I feel like if I was looking for a job and I walked into that environment, you would, it would be a positive feeling, you know, to see.
I'll share this, and I'll be done, because I know my time's over, but the highlight of the weekend for me, and I told the team this morning, was we had the teacher cadets this year, they didn't help us last year, that was our mistake. So we had them, and one young man who was a teacher cadet was helping, and he said, I was talking to him, he said, yeah, I'm just a teacher cadet, because I need an elective, I needed a credit. But he said, after today, I've changed my mind. I think this is something I wanna do, so. That made it all worthwhile, that one comment.
It's amazing how little things can make a big impact.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
It was very nice, and the people were so warm. Your staff was very friendly and everything. It was very exciting, I enjoyed it. And that job was tempting. I said, how much you pay?
All right. Okay. All right, we'll move on to our consent items. We have our board, 2024, 2025 board meeting dates. Is someone over there? Anybody have any question about that? All right.
May we approve the dates? Second.
Anybody all in favor? All right, and that moves us on to our guaranteed maximum price for their new Darlington Elementary School, the site package. And Dr. Newman, I'm gonna let you begin with this one.
Sure.
This is for the site package.
So Chair Hassler, members of the board, members of our audience, as everybody knows that we have been in the process of designing the new elementary school in the Darlington area that, of course, is combining St. John's Elementary and Rosenwall Elementary Schools. And that site, of course, is off Highway 52. And so architects have been on board for a while, working on the design of that. One of the conversations that we had early on in this process was starting on what we call an early site package, which for those in our audience, that's where they can actually start working on the land itself, the dirt. And so instead of having to wait to where you bid everything at the same time, it actually gives you a chance to kinda get a jumpstart on things. And so again, I think it's good that we were able to put that site package, that early site package, together in order to start moving dirt and making that site ready for what they call a building pad in order for the next guaranteed maximum price, which will be the actual cost of the building that we should see sometime in the next month or so, right? Next three to four weeks, we should also see that. So we have an early site package price, and then we'll have a building price. And so this is the first step. And the early site package is basically for all of the work that has to do with getting dirt put in place for the building pad, but also the roads that will be cut in. Again, as most people are aware of, Levensworth is where the entrance and exits are coming for the new elementary school. And so that road work actually goes pretty far up into the property from the back side of where Levensworth Road is. So you've got roadworks, you've got the building pad, you've got sidewalks, you know, curds, retention ponds, you know, just a lot of the things, and actually prepping the site to allow construction to take place as well. A lot of equipment's gonna be coming on by the subcontractors in order to construct the actual building itself. And so there's a lot of pieces that are involved with that as well. But, you know, again, it's the first time that we've had a chance to really look at, you know, what it's gonna cost to get the site ready. And so the guarantee, I also, Bart Cease from EdCon is with us tonight, by the way. Bart, welcome. Thank you for being here. He is able to answer any questions that, if we have any, that are, will be quickly above my pay grade. That's why Bart is here, to answer the expertise questions about the dirt and the site itself. But again, you know, the, what we call the guaranteed maximum price, which means it cannot be above this no matter what, that price for the grand total of the whole package is approximately $8.8 million. And so that price, you know, includes everything that I had just mentioned earlier. And there is also some contingencies in there for, for example, DOT. There may be some requirements that we're not aware of currently about having to do some road widening work, for example, on Levensworth. That happened on our other elementary schools that we built. We did not know early on what the requirements would be, and DOT is usually a little bit later on in the process, so we made sure to hold back some monies for that. We learned that from the last time around. We didn't have money held back the last time, and those were change orders that we had to implement. So the contingencies are in place to help us.
So the known DOT work that we know we'll have to do is included in the 8.8?
It is. So, well, we don't know it yet. We may not have to spend it. So there's a contingency in that in case we have to use monies, but we may not have to. But what we learned the last time around with those three elementary schools is DOT came back kinda late in the game on all three of them.
But I mean, we're not waiting to see what the DOT costs are gonna be. I mean, we know some of them, right? Okay, that's what I was gonna say.
Yeah, there's.
I mean, so there is a chance that we won't spend all the contingencies, because if there's not additional DOT that we hadn't already planned for, then it won't be that. That's what I was trying to get at.
Yes, that is, that is a correct statement. And so, you know, again, with prices, I mean, I think all you have to do is kinda read the e-clippings and read the news articles that are going around. It seems like, you know, every couple of weeks to a month, something else comes out in the prices. I wish this price was lower, you know, I'd hope that it would be a little bit lower. But we did have four subcontractors bid, which is a good turnout for this. So we had four solid companies bid on this work. And so I am confident that that's the market price today for the work that we asked to be bid on. So I may wish it was less expensive, but as far as is it a true price, is it a market price, I do believe it is a market value price. And again, you know, working with Bart and EdCon and having those conversations, I think they feel very comfortable with the subcontractor that is being recommended for the work. And that the biggest thing is, is that, you know, with the board, with the recommendation to the board tonight to approve this, with the board's approval, we plan on start digging dirt immediately, because we are on a timeline. And so, you know, that's the other piece, is that, you know, as soon as they're ready to get started.
How much is the contingency?
So the contingencies are approximately $1.3 million out of that. So the contingencies are approximately $1.3 million out of that price. So out of 8.8, about 1.3.
I hope we'll say something there.
What's the square footage that we're, now with the added special ed classes, et cetera, what's the square footage of that?
We're right at 100,000. Right at 100,000. And again, all that will, so the next steps, right, will be for the actual building to be bid and to get that price and to see what that looks like with the subcontractors that will be bidding. And again, we should have good competition on that for all the major systems to get that price. And we should have that price to us to where we can approve that at the next board meeting that we have in March, that that'll come up.
Does that include the entire tract of land or do you only do site work? Like, where are you going to be able and where are you going to do stuff?
So it's a little bit of both. It is definitely where the building is and the roads, right? But then also, you know, for example, there are portions of that land, like I would say probably 10% of that land. Bart, is that a fair number that I'm talking about? 10% that would need some work that are on parts that aren't impacted by the actual construction? Is that a, so like that 10% might be getting through the start of the property on Levensworth and then having to work around that with the roads. So there's probably about 10% out of the 90, you know, out of the 100% of that property that they're doing a little bit of work for as well.
But we are doing work on the other 90% of it, I guess?
No, no, no.
I mean, that's what I'm saying. That's what I'm trying to get at. So there's like, that's a lot of land out there that, but we're only doing site work for what's absolutely needed.
That's right. Roads, building pad, and that little piece that we have to do to get in between those two. So probably 30, 35, 40% of the site, Bart, is that?
I would say that's, yeah.
Yep.
How many acres of land are you talking about?
That.
Audrey, can you speak? We don't have the microphone. You'll speak up.
Can you tell me how many acres of land we're talking about?
So that total property is right at about 107 acres. And so we're impacting with this work, we're impacting about 30 to 35% of that property.
What are we planning to do about the wetlands?
So there, again, there's part of this particular package includes.
Taking care of the wetlands.
Taking care of the wetlands. And again, there's a, there's a very small portion of that on this entire property. So, you know, again, I think you're looking at approximately 10% of the total 107 acres is impacted by wetlands.
Are they able, can you use any of the wetlands for retention, et cetera, or you can't disturb that at all? And what I'm getting at is overall, if we have 100, 107 acres, I think we've run into issues with the land that we've kind of had to do a little extra work. So what does that leave us available to construct? Should we need something in the future, available land outside of wetlands than what we're having to use now? Does that make sense?
There's a large amount that's outside the wetlands that will still be able to develop or in the future.
And I like time maybe, but I was just thinking that was one of our goals, was made it for the future if we needed for other things. Is it in such a way that you could put another facility there as it dispersed and interrupted by where we're siding this property?
No, there's the engineers and architects that have, we've sided the building, so there's plenty of room which you can do future development.
Does any of the retention that we're doing now accommodate anything in the future or does it have the accommodations or more?
Pretty much it's for now.
Like sometimes you do a development, it's got capacity for greater and I didn't know whether we're doing this or we're doing that.
No, we're not from a, it's just, two, one of the ponds could be easily extended for the next phase that you could do that. The others are kind of separated and not really, the ponds are closer to the 52. The wetlands are down close to Levensworth. So, and we're building closer to 52. So I would think the ponds are basically sized for the area that we are, we're building on.
Right. And the contingency of 15%, is that not a bit excessive for, it's like at this stage, have we not gotten everything out of the way that needs to be out of the way where we're concerned? I mean, I say that because before we even purchased, we do a due diligence where I thought a lot of this was identified or issues that we anywhere identified.
The largest contingency is DOT. And as Dr. Newman alluded to, DOT is very slow in responding. We did experience that at both Lamar and Hark School. So we're trying to mitigate that in the numbers we're giving you so we can be prepared. We don't know what DOT is going to come back and say. Usually it is unfortunately sometimes an eight month to a year process before they come back and say, this is what you need to do. And so we want to make sure that we've got some plans in place. So in case they come back and say something extreme, like I'm going to show a stoplight or, you know, we want this whole road reworked, you know, we just don't know. And based on past experience that we're dealing with, that I'm dealing with presently on another project, the civil engineer and his experience, we feel that we needed that kind of percentage.
I feel about it with a larger percentage. I mean, as opposed to construction, we've got a set structure, you know, what you're building.
And the good thing about it, those contingencies are your money. And, you know, we will spend what we have to as directed by the civil engineer. But at the end of the day, when the project's done, it's your money. And it will, it will go back to your money.
And so part of the concept that we're using here was an opportunity to say, is that at the next stage, would there be opportunities? Probably not the land part, but I know the building part, yes. But in this part, is there, we don't want to just, I'm just saying, would there be a possibility that we could find savings going forward? Have y'all, does that make sense? Obviously, and the contingency that we're allocating, that could come back if everything goes the way you planned. But once you're there, you start, are there other ways of saving now in this?
Well, we'll continue looking for ways to do that as we move through this process. The part that's good about this whole process that we've entered in together is we can have that conversation from the very beginning. And so we've been having that conversation with the design team from, from day one. As soon as we got involved, say, hey, can we do this? Can we do this? So we kind of parked through a lot of that already.
Okay. That part has been done. That's one point. In the original conversations, there were opportunities. So that is, has happened.
Right. And this is the net figure. Right. And one thing also to point out, the, we're developing, the road widening is sized for any future development. So that cost is kind of, you could say, is a shared cost between what's happening with the school now and also without all Levensworth, as well as the two roads that are coming in. Those two roads are designed to have really whatever else you guys want to do.
And that's what I meant earlier when I was asking, is anything that we're doing in this land and this site project now, will that accommodate something in the future, some expenses that we could also, that's my question.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. Thank you.
I did have a question. And I just kind of went back through my notes. And a year ago, when Dr. Curtis Cease was speaking with us, he was quoting us at $53 a square foot for the site work. And now, that would have been 5.3 million. I mean, are we still, I mean, I'm just kind of shocked. I mean, I know we've got 1.3 buffered in there, this contingency. But I guess I'm kind of shocked that I thought we were at the peak of pricing.
Yeah.
And to see that now at 8.8.
See, I was, I was hoping around six based off of those numbers, you know, from a year ago. But unfortunately, what we're seeing, not only in site work prices, but in the building prices, they're still escalating for school construction.
That's a big escalation from just a year ago when we thought things had peaked.
Yeah. And I think, like I said, if you, you see some of the numbers that are, that are going on around us right now, unfortunately, a lot of districts are experiencing the same, the same situation.
And I know we can't predict that until we get into it. But, you know, the trouble that we ran into JL Kane, where we eventually, because it's raining today is what's making me think of this.
You're wise to think that way.
They, has our, have our soil tests and such been out there that we think we are good with what we got?
Yes. We've tried to compensate for that. It is, there are some, there's some challenges on the site, much like any site that I deal with across the state. It's just a lot of the good land is not out there anymore because they've already been developed and done with. So we've tried to, tried to plan for that one the best we can.
And I guess that was kind of piggybacking there, one that I posed this to you earlier when we spoke some. During the due diligence, I had hoped, see, when we did Kane, we were already on site. It is what it is. We deal with what we've got. But here, product purchase, that's what the six months was for, was to check. And I know we don't check every section of the land, but where we're considering building, borings, et cetera, and studies, that not showed?
Yeah, the borings were good the first time around. And so all of those, you know, again, Bart and I were having this conversation. So the borings were fine that were done in the due diligence period. And the borings are fine now. The problem is you've got a lot of more, a lot more moisture in the ground now than when the original borings were done. And so in general, just this area has been, has been wetter than, you know, times in the past. So when we talk about the materials and talk about the dirt, it's not bad dirt or anything like that. Really what we're dealing with right now is just like today. I mean, it's, it's been wet. And we've had a pretty wet season over winter. And so Bart, is that a fair assessment as far as it's not necessarily bad dirt as much as it is?
But again, on a board, it wouldn't matter whether we're in December weather, we're in June.
Yep. It would because if it's warmer, it dries out.
I understand the temperature, moisture, that's what I'm saying, the soil type that we're checking for to see if it was compact, et cetera. I don't know. I just, I feel like that's what we're using excuse. Well, this, we're going to do this and got to do that. Well, had we, if we'd started this in June, then would our prices be different? Again, that doesn't defeat the problem that it's going to be wet at some point. We know that. Winter months is generally wetter. So I just, I don't know. Maybe I feel better, I guess, if you just told me that it's just a cost of construction at this point. It doesn't have anything to do necessarily with what's been found. Otherwise, I say that our due diligence period was wasted.
Yeah. No, no, it's, we, that, that was correct at the time. And again, had we started in May, you would have had 80, 90 degree weather to dry everything out that would have made that price lower at that time, potentially, potentially. Still don't know that. But there is a chance, like warmer weather where it's drier and hot, yeah, you, it's, you're not doing quite as much work at that time. So that's built into the price, obviously, that is. And all four contractors price that as well. So if that makes sense. I don't think it's a situation where, you know, soil is not what we thought it would be, or soil is bad or worse or anything like that. That's not the case.
It's just construction cost right there.
The cost of construction has gone up.
Yeah.
It's gone up a lot. Yes.
Anybody else, any questions?
Can we get a motion to accept the GMP for this site package?
To move.
Jamie, second, Warren, all in favor? Opposed? All right. Motion carries. Dr. Newman, you with the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Bart.
Thank you.
Chair Hassler, members of our audience, members of the board as well. Just a few updates from our report. Again, I'm going to mention the SCI report. It is due on the 15th. If you hadn't had a chance to go in the portal and do that, it's the same thing that you've done every year for our new board members. If you've still having questions about that, check in with Tina and she can help you about that. But remember, that's the report that we have to submit each year. And then there is a reason why our sound system is not working right now in this room and that we're all having to talk a little loud to the back of the room. But the district office, as we have talked about in the past, is going through a renovation for HVAC. And of course, that is being paid for through Esser monies that we received. And so we are having to get this space ready for construction, which means we have to be out of it. And so we should be here for the March meeting. It may look a little bit more bare than what it is today, although it's starting to look bare in here. But the sound system was part of what we have to, the electronics that are in the ceiling, if y'all remember, there was a very large projector that was here at one time. And so those are things. In room three, we had to do the same thing. So we're having to move some things for construction to take place because all of the ceiling is going to be replaced as part of this process. So our move out date is, we're supposed to be out of here by March 22nd. The 22nd's on a Friday, so we'll be moving that week, the 18th through the 22nd. And of course, we'll need to message to our community about where they need to go to, to find us. We will, most of our offices will be at the Annex, which is kind of old stomping grounds for a lot of y'all from the past. So, but our board meetings for April, May, and June are to be determined. Of course, we have big meetings in May because of all the recognition. So that's at Mayo. So we may have a couple of them at Mayo, and then we may have one at another school site, just to have another school experience. So, but we will not be in this particular building. So did want to let everybody know about that, that that's, as you continue to walk in the district office, you'll see more and more things that are being removed over time. So the Cognia process, remember this was Advanced Ed that used to be SACS, and then it became Advanced Ed, and now it's Cognia. It's the accreditation process for the school districts once every five years. We're in the midst of that, as I've mentioned to the board in the past, and our principals are aware of this as well. We're at the point where they are going to be reaching out to subgroups to have conversations with you about the district in this accreditation process. The board is part of that. So there will be some board members that are contacted to participate in surveys as well as a possible small group conversation. Most of these are being conducted via Zoom. And so a lot, a lot of those are being done electronically right now. So we'll keep you posted on that. But again, the administrators in this room are aware of that as well, that there's small groups that are being contacted, talk to them about the Cognia process. Of course, the hiring event that we had mentioned, again, thank you to you and your team, the HR team. Please let them know how much we appreciated everything that took place with that. Communications audit. Again, I think the board remembers that we had this conversation back at the retreat last June. And of course, now we are starting, we're embarking on this communications audit. Audrey and her, her team will be spearheading that for the district. Again, there will be other subgroups that will be contacted about participating in committees. Board members will be part of that. Administrators in the room will be part of that. Community members, students, teachers, et cetera, et cetera. There'll be a lot of groups that will be contacted. But we have just, I think today was your first kickoff meeting with the group from Enspra that is conducting this for us. And so I know, you know, Audrey says, I know I'm a geek about this, but I'm really excited that this is happening. But I think it's great for the district as well because in our strategic planning process, we said, you know, what are the strengths of the district? And communication was mentioned as a strength. And then we said, what are the challenges for the district? And communications was mentioned as a challenge. And so I think we just want to know how we stack up to folks that, that do this, these types of audits around the country. They'll be looking, comparing us to districts like ours, size-wise, across the country. And so we're excited for the information that'll be coming out. There'll be a big presentation for the board once it's completed. So they'll, they'll, you know, give the findings to the board and we'll have that at one of the board meetings that we have going forward as well.
Audrey, nobody else in the whole entire world would always be in Audrey's.
That's what I was saying. She was, she was like geeked about it this morning. So.
No one.
And then also, you know, I mentioned. And then, also, you know, I, I mentioned a couple of board meetings back, that the, you know, the Post and Courier have been recognizing students in the PD. Don't worry, Audrey, I'm not about to say too much, she's on edge over there, because I did this at a board meeting before. All I can say is that we have two students that are going to be getting recognized. I can't say who they are or what school they go to, because it's still not, you know, it, it's embargoed. But Thursday-ish is when we're thinking that we'll know. But just know, there's two Darlington County School District students that are gonna be honored with a Post and Courier award, and we look forward about bringing that information out to everybody on, on Thursday, and letting everybody know about that, so. And then, just briefly, I was, I participated over the past two weeks with two groups. One was from USC, University of South Carolina, with some other rural superintendents, and it revolved around leadership in school districts, and the difficulties that are happening right now around leadership. And then I also participated in a, a national summit this past week with fifty districts across the country, and some of our ed tech companies, and governmental agencies as well about the state of education. And again, just like we've talked about with teacher recruitment, and the shortage for teachers, it, it is really impacting at, not only with teachers, but a teacher shortage leads to a leadership shortage. And just, it's just on the radar with everybody talking about it right now. So, I, I feel good about what we're doing in the Darlington County School District, especially hearing about some of the struggles that other people are having, and some of the things that we have in place. And so, you know, hopefully we'll get a chance to see how all that bears out over the next couple of months in the hiring season, so. And that is everything that I wanted to mention in my superintendent's update.
Okay. Anybody got any questions, Dr. Newman?
I have one question. The strategic plan, is there an annual review on the strategic plan? If so, when is it gonna kick off?
There is, and so, that should be in April.
April, okay.
That we're looking at either, either late March or early April, because we have to have an update. Mrs. King, the State Department gets an update from us on our strategic plan in April, right? Is it the end of April that we have to have that to them? So, we want to be able to schedule that in time to be able to talk currently about the first year of the strategic plan and some modifications.
So, that'll be like a group again, it's not just gonna be done in?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so we will be reaching out to the stakeholders that participated, and possibly some other stakeholders participate, some new ones to participate as well, to kind of have that conversation.
Anyone else? All right, that leaves us to board member update. Mr. Morris.
I'm good, I'll admit, thank you.
Thank you.
Besides Melba.
I think Melba would be it. I wish I could tell you, I made those, but you know I did. I appreciate y'all and everything, but.
You might congratulate me a lot for that, because we did happen to mention to her daughter all Saturday.
Imagine where those came from.
You're good. It's Thompson. Melba's cinnamon, cinnamon rolls, which I don't think I've had yet, so I'm looking forward to them. It's apparently a legend.
You gotta heat them up, I'm just telling you, you gotta heat them up.
It's apparently a legend. I don't have a whole lot today, just, I really enjoyed the hiring event. It's just, the energy in the room is fun, it's exciting, fun to see all the schools. I think it's the only time I see all the schools together in one room, and I think, maybe, I hope I'm not forgetting something else. But anyway, it's fun to see all of them interacting with each other, and it's festive, and, and I was thinking how lucky we are to have so many, you know, great folks that are enthusiastic about our district, to lead in our district, and really appreciate everybody, the efforts you put into that hiring event, but also every day, I mean, it's, it shows, so. I think that's really all I've got today. I'm a little short on words today, believe it or not, you guys won't mind. But anyway.
No one outside.
Yeah, go, go roll the dice at the lottery or something, I'm never short on words, so. Anyway.
Mr. Je, oh.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeffords.
First of all, attended Lamar, Miss Lamar High School Scholarship Pageant Saturday night, and it was really great. I want to thank Dr. Thomas and his staff and what they did. I mean, the cafeteria was packed, they had to bring out extra chairs and all, and it was very well done, and they're really be commended for that. And congratulations Lamar High School, girls and boys, they made the playoffs in basketball, which is unusual for both of them to make it, so that's very good. And I've got a little project here with Mr. Schuer. The PTO at Spalding, Lamar Spalding, they bought sales for their playground, so they don't have any trees out there, and they need to be put up. They bought them last year, and they were supposed to be being put up, but this is a good time of year of putting them up before it gets so hot. So, if you could look into that, I will appreciate it. And Mr. Miller's already done all my vacancies for tonight, so I appreciate that, sounds real good, I appreciate what y'all are doing. And that's it. One other thing, thank you to all the schools for the gifts they gave us. I missed the meeting when they gave them out, but I do really appreciate it, they were, they really appreciate it, like Christmas presents.
Mr. Goodman.
Mr. Goodman.
First of all, Dr. Newman alluded to the paid book signing, the authors, the young kids, and my great-granddaughter was one of those kids, was author. And what I'm gonna say to this board is, if you, we would appreciate it if you would consider purchasing a book from them. They've got two different prices, one is for hardback, and one is for softback books. But I think it's a real, it was a real good turnout, and the book is kind of interesting. The other thing I want to mention is, I visited Bay Road, and one of the things that I looked at at Bay Road was the playground. And what I would like for us to look at is, when we build this new school, we need to look at that playground material, and, and what's there. Because when you look at Bay Road playground, and it's new, I, it's not adequate, I don't think, for the number of students that you have there. And I think it's something that we, we need to look at if we go forward in terms of providing the playground equipment for, for these kids, and that's it.
Ms. Kelly?
Um, just thank you for our gifts tonight, and we got some stuff from Hart School, is that Hart School Metal? Yep, too, and the, from Melba, the cinnamon rolls, and just again, you can't say enough, good job Saturday, it really was nice. I can't wait to see what, what next year looks like, I mean, it's getting better and better. Do you think most of your people that pre-registered showed up?
The few that did not, we had several did not, that did not, they were from Jamaica or the Philippines.
So, probably three hundred people, we had three hundred people come through there. That was good. Gets me up on a Saturday morning, it's gotta be good.
They did ask, the ones who did not show up emailed us the night before the day of, wanting to know if there was a virtual component, that wanted to participate, but we didn't have a virtual component, so.
And so, you hired people on the spot for some of your positions?
We do contingency recommendations on the spot, we can't do the full process, but we have a document that they sign, and if they do make it all the way through the process, then they get that fifteen hundred dollar bonus that you awarded to them. But one thing we learned that maybe we need a virtual component for next year, so we may see a room next year with computers set up, with some Zooming going on.
Nice, looks good. Just three.
Sitting here actually taking some notes, you know, session starts tonight. Congratulations to, you know, all of our student athletes, off one, you know, again, like has been said, you know, thanks for all the gifts, you also wasn't here last meeting, including what we've got this evening from Hart School Metal and from Melba. Also, we had two seniors in the district that was awarded scholarships from the Kappa, I know Sheriff Hudson, he was talking about that earlier. Then, for everyone tonight heading home from the meeting, and in the morning, coming into school and all, be careful with the winds, you know, we're supposed to start getting some pretty strong wind gusts, around twenty-five to thirty miles an hour, you start around nine o'clock at night, and by four AM to eight AM, forty-five to fifty mile an hour gusts. So, everybody, be cautious of tree limbs, power lines, and roads. Love that.
All right, next up, Ms. Gore.
Same for last today, I can't believe it.
Best of all.
The best of all.
Well, first of all, I want to thank the athlete, the athletes, I want to thank the principals, the coaches, and the athletic directors, everybody took a part in these young men's lives. And I so hope that all of them get an opportunity to, to go further, whether they go to college, maybe get a scholarship or something. And I believe Kenny DeBoes is related to me, because I, my maiden name is DeBoes, so I'm gonna check on him, because I believe, because he looks just like my grandson, I couldn't believe it tonight. So, I'm hoping that all of these young men get an opportunity to go further than high school, and to do something great. Dr. Newman, you did a great job tonight on, on explaining to us about what's going on with the strategic planning. I'm good, I'm glad to see so many schools involved in so many activities, and doing great things with the children. Everything teaches them, expands their minds, to go further. So, I'm very happy to see that in the strategic planning, and I'm looking forward to the report, the report in April. Also, there were a lot of people that didn't know about the hiring event, and, and some people that I talked to about it, I saw them there, I told them about it, and they came, and I was so glad to see them. But then others started calling me, saying, why you didn't tell me? And so, what I did, I said, call Chuck Miller, at the, at the school board, our, our school district, call Chuck Miller, and he can, you know, take you there, so some people gonna be calling you. So, some of them are certified, and some of them are not certified, they're looking for like teacher aid or something like that, but some of them are school teachers. They'll be calling you, and there are a few that's coming for some HBCU schools, they're just graduating, they'll be graduating this year. And when I was down there, I told some of my sorority sisters about coming to Darlington School District to teach school, because it would be a good, so they're gonna be calling you. So, I, so I hope that turns out good, and let me know.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I'm gonna be, I'm gonna talk to them again if they don't call you. But I'm encouraging them to come to the school district, because we need teachers. And what else I think I had to say? Oh, about the property that we're working on, and, and the eight point eight million dollars, we already voted on it, but I do understand that dirt not cheap, by being a realer for a long time, and what it takes to prepare land for construction, and you don't know what you're gonna run into, when you, when you start digging up that dirt. You don't know what you might run into. So, I understand there are contingencies, and that's why I agree with the eight point eight million, because you never know what you're gonna run into when you're, when you're digging up raw land. So, I, but I'm hoping for the best for the district, that we don't have to spend all this money. So, I'm hoping for them, but you don't know what you're gonna run into, once you start digging up that dirt. So, I'm hoping everything works out well for the district on that part. And I don't have anything else to say on tonight, I think that we had a very good meeting tonight, I enjoy participating in the meeting tonight. Sometimes I'm a little shy, and I don't talk. I know, you're doing, you ain't know that? Y'all have an idea I was shy? I'm shy. Yes, I am, I'm very shy. But my husband said, well, when you start talking, nobody can shut you. So, good meeting tonight, everybody. And Mr. Brown?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for working on my.
I got you.
You got me?
Yes.
Thank you so very much. I don't know what I'd do without you. So, I have anything to say.
You're good?
I'm good.
All right. I would like to just bring up our Hall of Fame, we had our Hall of Fame, we held that in January, and we honored, this is our very first year, we had five inductees, that was, we voted on those back in the fall, but we didn't attach names with those, because we were waiting to let the families know. But that was Dr. Alan McCutcheon, who was a former principal and also a board member. We had Dr. Rainey Knight, who had been, was a principal and administrator, and then our superintendent for multiple years. We had Ms. Lena Pearson, who was our librarian for multiple years, Sergeant Major Conell Delane, who was a board member here, and then Ms. Jean Taylor, who was our principal at St. John's, who passed away, both of those, Mr. Delane and Ms. Taylor, their families were there to accept those awards. Audrey and your team, and Tina worked tirelessly to get that night off, and it was, it was just, I got so much positive feedback from that evening, from the inductees, and from others, and people who read about it in the paper, and I'm just looking to see what we can build on that. We, we had, that was just a solid, solid group of educators that we honored that night, and so, I truly appreciate all we did for that. Mr. Miller, I know it's gone around the table, and we've said how much we appreciated the fair, but I, I would like to add my amens to that one as well. The energy, the, the effort that your staff and the schools and the principals and everyone put into it just spoke volumes. So, I was also very intrigued by, there was a booth or table there from Clemson University, and about a partnership that we may be doing with them to, for some recruitment of teachers, and getting young teachers in the classroom early, and so, that hopefully, they have seen good numbers with retention for those teachers who have done that, instead of coming your first year, and you're dead by your second, and you just quit by your third. You know, our five-year retention rate, that, you know, we just eat up our young, and so, I just, I think this is a very positive way that we might be moving forward with, with, you know, recruitment and such, so that was, that was just very exciting. So, those are all very positive things, and thank you for everyone that everybody else is doing. And that's all I have. So, that will move us on to our personnel actions. Can I get a motion to approve our personnel action?
May I move to reset personnel actions?
All in favor? Anyone opposed? And we have, that motion carries, and we have an executive session tonight, can I get a motion? This involves a personnel matter, so can we get a motion?
Need to immediately move into executive session to discuss personnel issues outside contractual matters.
Okay. Let me get a second.
Second.
All in favor? We'll move into executive session. We'll move on to executive session.
All right, we had a motion to come out of the executive section by Mr. Reed, seconded by Mr. Jeffords. And no actions were taken, no votes were taken. Can we get our motion to adjourn?
I would make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Meeting is adjourned. Before we go, let's... Can we get this picture?
Yes.